The broadcast of the regular meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission will now begin.
All right, I will call to order the May 11th, 2020 Minneapolis City Planning Commission hearing. The time is 4:31. My name is Sam Rockwell, Service President of the Planning Commission. And I will ask the clerk to please call the roll to confirm attendance of my fellow commissioners.
Caprini?
Here.
Dunick? Esmiley?
Here.
Lipkeep here?
Here.
Marwa?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Olson? Olson?
Here.
Rockwell?
Here.
Schrader?
Here.
And Sweezy?
Here.
All right, thank you. Our next item of business is to approve the minutes from the April 27th, 2020 Minneapolis Public, Minneapolis Planning Commission hearing. Do I have a motion to approve those April 27th minutes?
To move?
Mr. Esmiley?
Second.
I'm sorry, who provided the motion?
Caprini.
Very, very good. So we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Caprini?
Aye.
Esmiley?
Aye.
Lipkeep here?
Aye.
Marwa?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
That's eight zero.
That motion carries. Our next order of business is to organize the agenda for today's hearing. I will walk through the items on the agenda. And I'm not sure if there is the ability for folks to unmute if they are on the phone to pull something off for consent, but if you wish to unmute by signaling star six, our agenda is available for those listening or watching on YouTube at limbs, L-I-M-S dot Minneapolis M-N dot G-O-V. So first item is item number five. The Station Development LLC and Hennepin County Housing and Redevelopment Authority, 2225 Lake Street East in Ward Nine, that item will be on consent. Our next item is item number six, North Loop Green Phase Three, 405 and 408, Fourth Avenue North, 328 and 330 Fourth Street North in Ward Three. That item we will discuss. Next item is item number seven, Chertan Cantada Expansion at 411 East 38th Street in Ward Eight. Is anybody on the line wishing to testify on?
Are you there?
Yes.
Sam?
Yep. All right, I will switch to-
I apologize, I'm on my, I apologize, I'm on my phone, so I'm not able to mute myself. I would just like to, item nine, I'm going to be abstaining from item nine.
Very good.
Sam, you're muted.
All right, am I in now? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I can-
All right, sorry, I switched my phone. I thought someone said they couldn't hear me here. Item number eight, which is Gerard Terrace in Ward Five, will be continued to the June 1st Planning Commission hearing. Item number nine is Lake Country School addition at 3733 Pleasant Avenue, 3749 Pleasant Avenue, and 3752 Pillsbury Avenue in Ward Eight. Is anyone on the line to speak against staff recommendation for item number nine?
Caprini, I'm going to be abstaining from item number nine.
Very good. All right, we'll place item number nine, consent. Item number 10 is 1127 Fourth Street Southeast and 411 12th Street Southeast in Ward Three. That item will be continued to the June 1st, 2020 City Planning Commission hearing. Item number 11 is 212th Avenue South and 1112nd Street South in Ward Three. We will discuss item number 11. Item number 12 is 514, 516, and 520 West Lake Street. At 2949 Garfield Avenue South in Ward 10, we will discuss item number 12. And item number 13 is Lake Street Dwelling Phase Two, 510 West Lake Street, 2946 and 2948 Harriet Avenue South in Ward 10, and we will discuss item number 13. So the agenda as amended is on consent, items number five, seven, and nine. On our discussion agenda, items number six, 11, 12, and 13. And on our continue to June 1 list, items number eight and items number 10. Commissioners, could I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Commissioner Esmiley?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
I have a second. Commissioner Dunick?
Second.
Motion and second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Caprini?
Aye.
And I have the abstention for item number nine. Dunick?
Aye.
Esmiley?
Aye.
Lipkeep here?
Aye.
Marwa?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
It's nine zero on all items except for item number nine is eight zero with Caprini's abstention.
Okay, and I think our abstention is really necessary on our next motion as well, which is, I will open the public hearing on consent. If anyone's on the line to speak at any of the consent agenda items. Close that public hearing. Commissioners, I will combine our consent and continuance motions here. If I could have a motion to approve our consent agenda and to continue items eight and 10 to the June 1st, 2020 City Planning Commission hearing. Approval of the consent agenda and of continuing, Commissioner Esmiley?
I move for the approval of consent agenda and continuance of the two items.
Commissioner Dunick?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Caprini?
Aye.
Dunick?
Aye.
Esmiley?
Aye.
Lipkeep here?
Aye.
Marwa?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
That's nine zero except for number nine, which is eight zero.
Very good. Those motions carry, and we'll move on to our discussion agenda. Our first item is item number six, and staff is Hillary DeBorak.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a project called North Loop Green Phase Three, located at 405 and 408 Fourth Avenue North and 328 and 330 North Fourth Street. Oops, excuse me. There are several applications on the agenda for this item. One is a conditional use permit for a planned unit development. There's a conditional use permit for a surface parking lot in the downtown parking overlay district. A variance to increase the number of spaces in that parking lot from 20 to 44. A variance of some of our Plaza standards, site plan review, and then preliminary and final plat. Next slide, please. This is located on the north side of North Fifth Street and just south of the Burlington Northern and San Rafael Railroad and Cedar Lake Trail. A portion of the site is located underneath the North Third Street and North Fourth Street viaducts that connect downtown Minneapolis to I-94. The site is currently used as a surface parking lot, and it should be noted that that surface parking lot is located approximately three levels below the grade of North Fourth Fifth Street. This development is the third phase of a multi-phase planned unit development. The first phase was Dock Street Flats, which was reviewed in 2012, and then T3, which was reviewed in 2015. Next slide. The project will consist of 452 dwelling units, approximately 339,000 square feet of office space, approximately 21,000 square feet of retail, and 488 enclosed parking spaces. Vehicular access to the site will be from North Fifth Street and from a two-lane private drive called Dock Street. Residential and office contract parkers will utilize the parking entrance at the green level off of Dock Street, and short-term parking will be accessed from North Fifth Street. The Fifth Street Plaza will be a pedestrian-friendly zone activated by outdoor seating and daily activity. The plaza will have its own entrance from North Fifth Street, and it will serve as the drop-off and pickup zone for residents, office users, as well as restaurant patrons. This function is necessary to ensure the pedestrian and driver's safety, as North Fifth Street is a two-way street with no ability for drop-off on the street. The plaza then leads to a grand outdoor staircase that connects the plaza with the Cedar Lake Trail elevation, also known as the Green. The plan for the Green, which is at the Cedar Lake Trail elevation, includes land that is owned by MinDOT. The applicant Heinz is working with MinDOT to come to an agreement for future use of their land underneath the viaducts, which will increase the size of the, of the Green. Staff is recommending approval of all applications this evening, subject to conditions. The planned unit development, the amenities that were proposed, and we are recommending that you support those amenities, are pedestrian improvements, lead for the office building, the outdoor open space, and then additional amenity points for the pedestrian improvements. The surface parking that is at the green level does require conditional use permits. Most of the proposed parking that is on the site will be removed. The applicant is proposing up to 44 surface parking spaces to be retained at the green level in order to provide short-term parking for visitors, persons involved in the programming of the Green, and also for food trucks. But the development will remove most of the existing commercial parking that is there, but having some accessory surface parking at that large amenity is appropriate given its location, and that is not located on or adjacent to a public street. And this is consistent with surrounding developments, and the proposed parking is consistent with the desired public nature of the Green. The applicant has asked to increase the number of parking spaces in that surface parking lot from 20 to 44. As I mentioned, they are removing 351 of the existing surface parking spaces, or 87% of what is currently on their site. Most of the proposed parking in this development, as you know, is located within the building, however, to accommodate short-term parking next to the Green, they are asking for the variance to go up to 44 spaces. Practical difficulties do exist in compliance with the ordinance due to unique circumstances that were not created by the applicant. The area under the viaducts cannot be developed with structures due to use and maintenance agreements held by MinDOT. The project seeks to repurpose the existing commercial parking lot for public open space, which requires some visible accessible outdoor parking to serve visitors and programming. The character of the area will be enhanced by this development, including the Green. The variance for the Plaza standards, they are seeking exceptions to those through aerial instructions, seating, and trash and recycling receptacles. We are asking that you support those variances. Next slide, please. The applicant, or, excuse me, the development meets almost all of our site plan review standards. They are seeking alternative compliance for building placement. The building is located more than eight feet from North Fifth Street. The office portion of this PUD is located 190 feet back, and that is to accommodate the drop-off along North Fifth Street in order to allow cars to move off of the street and onto the development site to drop off and pick up people. They need alternative compliance for visual interest, and there are blank spaces around the mechanical areas. They are not meeting window requirements on the parking garage sides of the building along the Cedar Lake Trail, and also the on-street parking at the Green, or onsite parking, I should say. And then they also need alternative compliance for ground floor active functions, and then ground floor active functions within the parking garages. And again, those are for the levels that are facing the Cedar Lake Trail and that unsent parking. We are recommending that you support all of the alternative compliance that's needed for tonight, or for this development, excuse me. And I will stand for any questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Meyer?
Thank you. I wanted to ask about the 44 surface parking spots. So the downtown parking overlay district limits it to only 20. And I kind of wanted to ask the developer if they're available to get a sense of what would the alternative be? What would that space be used for if the variance was? I don't know, it can't be used for structures, but could it be used for landscaping or something else?
And Commissioner Meyer, we do have, I think representatives of the developer will ask to join us in a moment too, so we can either have staff reflect on that for a moment or hold the question for the applicant. What's your preference?
Oh, I'd prefer to ask to be applicant.
All right, very good. So we'll hold on that question. Are there any other questions of staff at this time? Hearing none, I will ask the applicant to step to the proverbial microphone and introduce themselves.
Just a note to open the public hearing before we have the applicant speak, please.
Oh, very good. Open the public hearing. With that, I'll ask the applicant to speak. Unmute yourselves by hitting star six.
Hi, Bob Pfefferly here. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, first of all, I just wanted to say thank you, President Rockwell and members of the Planning Commission. We appreciate your consideration for approval of our North Loop Green project today. And I'd also like to thank Hillary DeBorak and the staff for working through this complicated project with us over the past few months. The, you know, we're incredibly excited to bring this transformational mixed-use transit-oriented development to the North Loop and city of Minneapolis. And, you know, I think as you've seen, it will deliver on the city's long-term vision for quality, high-density development here at the confluence of all things transit, so. And in addition, it'll create hundreds of union construction jobs, increase property tax base, provide the much-needed green space for recreation and relaxation, and really re-weave the fabric of the city back together in this area. The question that was asked was regarding the parking. And so the, if you look at the plan, and I'm not sure which page it's on with what you have in front of you, for some reason, the slides are not showing up on my video feed here. But there is a site plan of the Green, and you'll see the parking that was incorporated into the Green space is strategically located at the perimeter of the park. And a lot of that has to do with, as Hillary had mentioned, access to those spaces for short-term use for patrons of the park. If there are activated events, and the intention with this Green space there is to really have it a highly activated space so that it is, you know, not just a place to stop and sit. It will be that as well, but it'll also be a place to have events and engage and create a little urban oasis off the Cedar Lake Trail and for the entire neighborhood and the city. So regarding if the spaces were not parking, you know, I guess to that extent, they might not be part of the Green space at all. Much of that additional parking is on MinDOT land, and the intention was to make sure that we had enough to service the area and still provide the flexibility and functionality to have things, whether they are food, food truck events, farmers' markets, and have a flexible space to be able to put those without necessarily impinging on the Green space itself within the body of the park. So, you know, by putting them at the perimeter and not impinging on the Ring Road that hopefully you see on the plan that you have in front of you, they're put in a strategic place that still allows us to maximize the recreational and functional space. And the fronts of those spaces and the edges of those will be landscaped and done in a very high-caliber manner. I hope that answers the question, but we're looking at it and as we see the need for some parking there, some people, and the intent is mostly will be people in the neighborhood that might walk or bike there, but certainly some people are not ambulatory enough to be able to get there. We want to make sure that there's also enough spaces for people that might be coming with families and others to be able to stop in and bring their dog or whatever it might be, and still find a convenient place to access.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioners, are there questions of the applicant, further questions or discussion with the applicant? And it's a request from Hillary as well to go to slide three, which maybe we're on here. Commissioners, are there further questions of the applicant? Looks like there are no further questions of the applicant. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else on the line wishing to testify? I see that we have Bert Coffin and Roseth and Carol Lansing also on the line. Not sure if anybody else wants to testify. Star six if you do, and we'll move, we'll close public hearing shortly if you do not. All right, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have a number of applications before us. Would anybody like to start us off with a motion? Or is there further discussion? Conditional use permit for the PUD. Conditional use permit for parking. Commissioner Esmiley?
I move, sorry, let me turn my video on. I move that we approve all the staff recommendations for item number six for conditional use permits, variance, and site plan review, as well as the plat.
All right, so we have a motion to approve item A, conditional use permit for PUD. Item B, conditional use permit for surface parking with 44 spaces. Item C, variance for the surface parking. Item D, variance of the Plaza standards. Item E, site plan review. And item F, the preliminary and final plat. So items A through F. Commissioner Lipkeep here?
I will second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve all the applications A through F for item number six. Commissioners, is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Caprini? Caprini?
Aye.
Dunick?
Aye.
Esmiley?
Aye.
Lipkeep here?
Aye.
Marwa?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
That's nine zero.
Nine zero, that motion carries, and that concludes our business with item number six. Our next item for discussion is item number 11, and city staff is Aaron Hanauer.
Aaron, please unmute your microphone.
Thank you. All right, so 212th Avenue South. Project proposed by Roger Welton and ESG. The subject site is in the Mill District near the Guthrie Theater and Gold Medal Park, zoned I-1 with the industrial living overlay district. The current conditions, if you go to the next slide, please, is a one-story building with 25-space surface parking lot. Next slide, please. There's been a lot of development, as you commissioners are aware of, that's taken place in the Mill District in the last 15 years. That is similar to the applicant's proposal. There's been a 17-story legacy building, 12-story stone bridge, and a 12-story encore, just to name some of those projects that had been approved and built. Next slide, please. And we can go to the next slide. So the applicant is proposing to remove the one-story building and construct a 12-story, 225-unit building with 224 parking spaces, nine of those spaces being tandem. The applications needed for the project, a conditional use permit to allow for residential units in the industrial living overlay district, a conditional use permit to allow for an increase in height from eight stories, eight stories 112 feet to 12 stories 132 feet, a variance to increase the floor area ratio from 4.8 to 6.7, and site plan review. And I'll just note, as you see in the report, that the variance to reduce the off-street loading requirement has been withdrawn. Recommendations, staff is supportive of the applications in the project, and the applicant is supportive of the conditions of approval. And we feel like the applicant met the findings, and in large, including the future land use guidance of Transit 20, which is supportive of buildings up to 20 stories in height. Other positives, nicely designed building, continue the orderly development in the area, and provide 18 affordable housing units. There have been a lot of public comments with this project, approximately 40 letters submitted, some supportive, but those not, but summarize those concerns into three categories: traffic, height, and not having commercial on the first floor. For traffic, specifically concerns of congestion at the Washington Avenue intersections at 11th and 12th. And staff's comments are the following: The applicant will continue to work with Public Works and CPED to get to an approvable traffic demand management plan. Staff will continue to encourage the applicant to have, to support alternative modes of transportation. Staff will support the applicant's efforts to have 60% non-personal vehicle model split, and the project is exceeding their minimum vehicle and bike parking requirement. Also note, another positive for pedestrians and bicyclists is the removal of a curb cut on second, a popular bike and pedestrian route. Moving on to the height, for a condition use permit to allow for the additional height, 12 stories 132 feet. This is similar in size and height to neighboring buildings. Applicant stepping back that upper floor, and all the developments that I've mentioned and others have required, have gone beyond the base zoning and have required a conditional use permit for height. Next slide, please. According to the shadow study, there isn't an adverse impact on residential units during the summer and in the morning hours of the seasons shown here. And there's more than 70 feet of separation between the proposed building and- and the nearest neighbors. Next slide, please. And staff has continued, the last thing I wanted to mention, there was comments about not having commercial on the ground floor. Staff is definitely, would be supportive of a mixed-use building, but it is not a requirement at this location. So with all that, staff supportive of the requested applications, and I'm happy to answer questions that you may have.
Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Staying on, I will open the public hearing and ask the applicant to unmute hearing star six and introduce yourself, add anything further that you think is relevant to our decision-making.
Hi, Kyle Brasser with Reuters Walton is here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners and Aaron, for that overview. As I said, my name is Kyle Brasser. I'm with Reuters Walton, the applicant on this project. I appreciate the time to speak at this moment. I just thought it'd be helpful to provide a brief background on our project, especially because I know not all the commissioners who are on the planning commission now were at the time that we started Committee of the Whole. So just for a brief overview, our project team attended Committee of the Whole on February 13th of this year and at the time presented an 11-story, 202-unit building. We received overwhelmingly positive feedback from the committee at that time on all aspects of our design and did receive a couple of questions from committee members about whether or not we would consider going taller, considering, as Aaron mentioned, that the guidance in the area actually, under the comp plan, would provide for up to 20-story buildings. We also met with DMNA three separate times, initially just before our Committee of the Whole presentation and then twice subsequently as well. At that initial meeting with DMNA, we presented an 11-story, 202-unit building, the same as what we presented to the Committee of the Whole. And more recently, we have updated our plans to a 12-story, 225-unit building that you see in front of you today. I would like to just address, I've seen some of the public comment that's been received, and there's a little bit of confusion. I think there's been a couple of letters that have mentioned that we presented an eight-story building at one point. We didn't, we always had an 11-story building from the beginning and then, as mentioned recently, did update it to an 11-story, excuse me, a 12-story building. And we received some really good constructive feedback from DMNA throughout the process. And I just want to list a couple of the things that they suggested that we incorporate into our plans that we did and feel that it makes for a much better building. We eliminated, as Aaron mentioned, the request for an off-street loading variance. We added a pet walk, pet relief area on our site. We increased the side yard landscaping. We added screening around our transformer and generator and we added architectural variation to a large exposed concrete wall along one of the facades of our building. And again, I really, we feel that this has been a constructive relationship with DMNA and appreciate their feedback in making our design improved. DMNA issued a support letter and then last week issued a supplemental letter addressing our 12-story request. And I just would like to address what seems to be the main concern listed from DMNA in that letter, questions about the light and shading of the surrounding buildings. Our updated shadow study, as mentioned, shows minimal negligible impact on the shading of the surrounding buildings when going from 11 to 12 stories, in particular because our building is over 70 feet away from the nearest building. And regarding the comments about traffic, I would also say that the TDMP that we've received shows negligible traffic impact in the neighborhood. At this point, I'm happy to open it up to questions. I'm here on the line and appreciate the Commissioner's time and Aaron, your time as well. Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Loopkeep here.
Yeah, I was wondering if you could actually address the concern we had at Committee of the Whole regarding blank walls. I noticed in the rendering on sheet A10 at 12th and Washington, it shows a bit of it. And then obviously the sheet or two before it, it shows it. Could you address that a little bit?
Sure. So what we've done since that time is we have improved the landscaping along that blank wall. We're considering some taller landscaping that will help break up that facade and also precast concrete that will have some architectural variation to it so that it's not just a blank concrete wall. So those are the two main improvements we've made to that, to softening and improving the aesthetic of that facade.
And is it still then two stories that are just some sort of modulating concrete? Or is it, does it just look higher than it, than that is?
It's two stories.
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant? Hearing none. Thank you. I will open the line to anybody else who wishes to testify. I see the L.B. Guthrie, Stephen Lindenberg, Carol Lansing, Nick Walton, Robert Loken. I'm not sure if any of you would like to add anything to the applicant presentation.
This is Steve Lindenberg.
Hi, this is-
President. I'm the president of the Homeowners Association at the Stoneberg Lofts, which is directly across the street from the proposed project. And we have not had any negative comments in the past about the various projects in our neighborhood, Legacy, 11 and the like. But as we see the change from 11 floors to 12 floors on this particular proposal, we find that there are several weeks in the spring, early, and in the fall, later, that we are going to have an amenity deck, which has a pool, a hot tub, the fire pit area, and we're intending to expand those amenities. And they will be completely shaded for probably three to four weeks in the spring and three to four weeks in the fall at roughly 3:00 in the afternoon. With the 11-floor possibility that was proposed initially and we did not have comments on, we had more than a third of our deck, which remained lit and available for sunlight. And we feel that this change of the floor, unless it is set back to afford us some light for those several hours for several weeks, makes it much more difficult to find an acceptable project proposal.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you very much for that perspective. Next, L.B. Guthrie. I'm not sure if you're here with the applicant or as a resident.
This is L.B. Guthrie. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity. I'm a resident, Stonebridge. I'm also on the board. I'm also on the land use committee. I guess we've submitted a letter, the board has, which urges our position, but I would like to emphasize our opposition to a statement in the staff report. And this has to do with the code section 551.850, which says that the planning commission shall consider following factors when determining maximum height increases. And the second, the first one is access to light and air of surrounding properties. I don't think that's directly applicable somewhat. But the second one is shadowing of residential properties. So I think the applicant and the staff have both said it's minimal impact. And I think the staff comment is outside of winter afternoons and evenings, shadowing of neighboring residential buildings will be minimal. And I think as Steve Lindenberg just indicated that, and the shadow studies they produce only shows shadows at the equinox and at the first day of summer and the first day of winter. So if you look at the first day of fall, which is, you know, the day after the last day of summer, as you should look at those shadowing studies and see that our amenity sun deck is completely in shadow by 3:00 in the afternoon. And I guess our opposition, we support the project, but we oppose this additional floor. So we hope that you look at the shadow studies in light of the code requirement that compels you to look at shadowing of residential properties. Ours, of course, is across the street and is a residential property. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else, a member of the public not part of the development team, wishing to testify? Star six, unmute you. All right, hearing none. I will close the public hearing. Commissioner Smiley, question.
Thank you, President Rockwell. I have a question for the applicant. I did read a lot of these letters of support or otherwise for the project. I am, I was not on the commission when this project came to the Committee of the Whole, so I was not part of those discussions, unfortunately. I do want to ask if the applicant can explain whether or not the addition, like how much of impact that addition of floor actually had on the shadow that the building is casting? Because I'm looking at the shadow study and it seems like regardless of 11 or 12 or even 13 floors, the building that in, like we are hearing about, for example, will be shadowed anyway. So even if it's one floor lower than the proposal right now, like would that actually have an impact on December 21st at 3:00 p.m., for example?
I'll ask the applicant to respond to that.
Hi, this is Kyle Brasser. I'm back on. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thanks.
Okay, I would like to respond briefly, but I, Bob Loken, I know you're waiting in the wings. If you might be able to add a little bit of color. You know, as I addressed, maybe I glossed over it too much, but you know, my, the way I understand the shadow study is, to your point, Commissioner, it's a minimal impact when you add a floor or two. And so I don't know exactly how to quantify how much the shadowing changes when you add a floor. And that's why I was hoping Bob might be able to speak a little bit more detailed on the topic of the shadow study. So Bob, if you're available.
Sure thing. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I agree that the change from 11 stories to 12 stories, whether it's one additional floor or one lesser floor in the grand scheme of things has a relatively negligible effect. And I'd also note that even the maximum height allowable in this district, which is eight stories or 112 feet, even 112-foot building would be significantly shadowing at certain times of the day. And for instance, the 3:00 in the afternoon at March 21st and September 22nd. And also note that we did, there are some subtle things in the massing of the building that do slightly lessen the shadowing. The top floor of the building is set back 10 feet, which lessens the shadowing. And then there are also, the main body of the building is set back between 6 feet and 16 feet from the street, particularly on the west side, which incrementally improves the impact of shadowing in the afternoons.
Very good. And Commissioner Loopkeep here, I know you had a question for Bob as well.
Yeah, hi, I'm sorry. Question, maybe about the south and west elevations, because that blank seems a bit extreme. And I know we focus quite a bit at Committee of the Whole. So can you maybe talk a little bit more about that? Because I'm having a really tough time with that portion of the site plan review, number six. If you could address that a little bit?
Sure thing. This is Bob Loken again. When we met with you at Committee of the Whole, at that time, we were negotiating the abandonment of a, of a private utility easement on the western setback. And at the time, we didn't think that we would be able to add any landscaping or any significant landscaping within that 10-foot setback. Since we met with Committee of the Whole, we did successfully, the development team successfully negotiated the complete abandonment of that easement, which allowed us to design for tall trees there. And if you look at the rendering, it's possible that the tree species isn't exactly represented perfectly, but the trees we're proposing to plant there are river birch, which can get quite a good height.
What sheet is the rendering on?
A9. About the middle of the page from, on the right-hand side, aerial view from 11th and 2nd.
Okay, so that's showing the trees except where there's the generators. And what about on the south side?
Trees are planted on the south side as well. In fact, if I could, I could also point you to the landscape plan, which is, bear with me here. Which is sheet L1.0, which appears to be page 13 of this 34-page drawing set. And there you can see the river birch continue on the south side, along the south side, with the exception of where the pet relief area is and the second area well for garage ventilation. And the thing that we like about that design is that the, we think that the white bark of the river birch tree will create a nice striation against the rather dark concrete background and create a nice abstract pattern where it's not covered by foliage.
And then Bob, I saw that on that landscaping sheet, which thanks for pointing it out. You guys have some shrubbery screening the generator, it appears, on the west side. But I'm wondering, is there any sort of shade or screening for the pet area? Just, you know, I mean, animals get hot too, kind of thing.
Good question. As of, as of right now, there is not a, an architectural or landscape element that helps shade that, but that's, that's a good thought. It might be something that we consider. We typically don't plant trees within pet relief areas because they get really abused. But we could try to maybe squeeze in another tree to the east, closer to the east entrance to that pet relief area, which might provide some shade.
Thank you.
There are also some, there are also some trees within a median of the parking area directly to the south, so.
Okay.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Commissioners, are there other questions of the applicant or staff? We have a number of applications before us. Commissioner Meyer.
Hold it up. So I moved to approve the staff recommendations for item 11, including item A, the conditional use permit. To approve that, to approve the conditional use permit for item B, to approve the variance for item C, return the variance for item D, and approve the site plan review with the eight conditions listed.
Very good. We have a motion to approve all five items A through E, according to staff recommendation with all stated conditions. Commissioner Olson.
I second.
I second that.
A motion and a second. Commissioners, any further discussion? Hearing done, please call the roll.
Caprini?
Aye.
Dunick?
Aye.
Smiley?
Aye.
Lipke here? Lipke here?
Aye.
Okay. Marwa?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sveezy?
Aye.
So that's 9-0 to return D and approve A, B, C, and E.
Very good. That concludes our business with item number 11. I believe we recorded Commissioner Lipke here's eye, which is a question in the chat. We'll move on to item number 12, 514, 516, and 520 West Lake Street, 2949 Garfield Avenue South in Ward 10. Staff is Peter Crandall. Peter, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good evening. We're going to be looking at a couple of projects that are right next to each other on West Lake Street and are related as they will be sharing an underground garage and are linked through their compliance with the inclusionary zoning ordinance, but are being handled as separate project applications. So the first project that we're looking at is located at 514, 516, and 520 West Lake Street and 2949 Garfield Avenue South. All the sites are currently zoned for the C2 commercial district. The applicant, as a part of their application, is requesting a rezoning to the C3A Community Activity Center district. We can go to the next slide. The proposal for these sites is a new, well, I, I should note that the sites are currently vacant, and the applicant is proposing to construct a seven-story mixed-use building with 95 dwelling units and approximately 1,500 square feet of commercial space. We can go to the next slide. The site itself has frontage on West Lake and on Harriet, or sorry, Garfield Avenue. And then there is a shared public alley on the east side of the property that has access onto West Lake. Next slide. As I stated in my introduction, the project has an underground parking garage that will be connected to the neighboring project at 510. As a part of this project, the applicant is proposing 58 structured parking stalls, both in that underground garage and in one level of at-grade parking. Next slide. The project is a part of a connected series of projects by the same developer. The project immediately to the east, across Harriet Avenue, was recently approved by the City Planning Commission and is currently under construction. This project will be an all affordable project and, again, will be constructed and approved concurrently with a project immediately to the east at 510 West Lake Street. Next slide. The exterior materials the applicant is proposing are brick, metal panel, fiber cement, and a wood look metal panel. The project would be in compliance with the Site Plan Review standards for exterior materials, except for the north elevation, for which the applicant is requesting alternative compliance to exceed the maximum amount of fiber cement. Next slide. At the ground level, you can see the enclosed parking area that incorporates part of the provided onsite structured parking. Access to that enclosed parking area will be from the shared alley with exiting onto Garfield Avenue. The applicant is proposing two small retail spaces at the corner of West Lake Street and Garfield Avenue, one of which would have a principal entrance onto Lake, and one of which would have a principal entrance onto Garfield Avenue. The remainder of the ground floor is primarily taken up by residential amenity and circulation space, club room, conference room, and leasing offices, as well as a bicycle storage facility. There is a proposed dog run at the rear of the proposal along the north property line. Next slide. The applicant is proposing to enhance some of the landscaping in the public right-of-way, but they are requesting alternative compliance for their onsite landscaping. Next slide. So again, the required applications, rezoning from C2 to C3A, conditional use permit to increase the maximum building height in the C3A from four stories, 56 feet, to seven stories, 78 feet. Variance to increase the maximum floor area ratio from 4.02 to 4.91. That's a 22% increase. The project does qualify for two density bonuses in the Hennepin-Lindale PO. There's a 25% increase for structured enclosed parking and a 25% increase for affordable housing. And then a site plan review for the seven-story, 95-unit mixed-use building. The 2040 guidance for the site is for the community mixed-use land use category and the corridor six built form category. The community mixed-use category calls for publicly accessible uses on the ground floor. And under the policy language, it suggests that publicly accessible means generally businesses such as offices, retail, medical facilities, et cetera. Staff is recommending approval of the rezoning application and the conditional use permit for height. We are not recommending approval of the variance for FAR. And we're subsequently not recommending approval of the site plan review. This last slide illustrates some of the recent projects that have been approved along the Lake Street corridor and some of the FARs of those structures. They range between five and seven stories and have approved FARs of between 3.34 up to 4.5. You know, I think staff is in general supportive of a high-density mixed-use project in this location, but it's really a matter of being able to make the legal findings for the FAR variance, which we don't feel like we can do in this case, in particular because the applicant is not achieving all of the available FAR bonuses under the current zoning code, including most specifically the bonus for mixed uses on an adopted goods and services corridor and in a land use category that calls for commercial space at the ground floor. So at a minimum, we'd like to see the applicant meeting that requirement in order to grant such a large variance, but even with all of those bonuses, we think that the request is outside of where we can make those legal findings and where we think that the regulation around 2040 will land when we ultimately reform the zoning code to account for the additional height and bulk that will be allowed with the new land use guidance. So I will pause there and I can take any questions.
Commissioner Lipke here.
I mean, Peter, I just had a really quick question. If you could address the east and north elevations, there appear to be quite substantial blank walls of masonry, I assume just CMU block, but it doesn't say. But can you just talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So the east elevation that faces the alley is largely a masonry wall that would primarily enclose the at-grade parking garage and would not be highly visible from the public realm. There isn't necessarily a lot of space in the proposed site plan for incorporating landscaping, and there wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily be visible from the neighboring property either, as there's a similar condition proposed for that project in terms of the ground level uses. And then along the north property line, there is, again, the ground floor of that elevation is enclosing the parking. There's the proposed dog run at that elevation on the ground level, and then some enclosed and screened mechanical equipment. There will be a fence around that north property line, a six-foot fence, that would largely obscure the, the view to that ground floor from the public realm and from adjacent property.
Very good. Any further questions of staff at this time? Commissioner Olson.
Yeah, Peter, could you just talk about what, are there any other density bonuses that were available beyond the commercial space? I'm just not familiar with those.
Yeah, so generally, there's three available density bonuses under the commercial districts, one for enclosed parking, which the project does qualify for, one for affordable housing, which the project also qualifies for, and then one for mixed uses on the ground level. And that requires that the project incorporate at least 50% of the gross floor area on the ground floor as commercial uses. And again, gross floor area does not include parking area, so that would be any of the occupiable space on the ground floor. And the project does not qualify for that bonus in this case because the uses outside of the two small retail spaces that the applicant is proposing would not be considered publicly accessible by staff.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Meyer.
My question was along the same line as Commissioner Olson's. So I, I just want to understand it correctly. So for this one, they can have 3.375, and they applied for 4.91 if they are. And for the next one, it's 3.375 to 5.2. And the highest one nearby is 4.5. So you don't want to approve one that's higher than any of the ones nearby, but would you recommend approving some middle ground in between if the applicant came with them?
So just for clarity's sake, and I, I provided the commission with a memo just to correct one thing in the staff report regarding this particular project, which didn't include that affordable density bonus. So the, the maximum allowable for this project is 4.02, because it does get those two bonuses. Staff is open to a reasonable variance in this case above the minimum, primarily because the current code is designed around a four-story maximum for the C3A. So we would expect that a six-story proposal that meets the intent of the land use guidance would reasonably have a higher FAR than what would have been previously allowed under the previous comprehensive plan. But we feel like the request, primarily because it's a seven-story building that doesn't incorporate a lot of changes or modulation to the massing to reduce the additional bulk that's being proposed, is not in line with what we can approve for our variance request. And we can't primarily make that first legal finding that there is a practical difficulty outside of financial considerations that would justify that request.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schrader.
Thank you, President Rockwell. I think first, more of kind of a comment and also a compliment to staff, maybe to start there, we're kind of getting it from the questions. FAR is very difficult to understand and to really see the trade-offs. I think it's more a comment on as we're starting to really look at the next version of the, of the code and what that's going to be, it's a little bit easier to say, to compare height, but FAR, which has a lot of the same effects, it's really hard to kind of quantify to people. And a lot of what we do at the planning commission is really make some of these things, make some of these decisions and trade-offs more accessible. And I, I feel like we're just not there yet with, with FAR, and I'm not sure how to, how to do that. So I think it's more, just I really appreciate what Mr. Crandall did in this instance, really explaining it and kind of saying, here are all the trade-offs, and here are the ways to get, to get the bonuses. I, I don't know that I have an answer for that, but I just think that that's something we're going to keep hitting when we have developments that offer a lot of amenities and would be for the public good, but still do not fit our requirements.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader, any other questions for staff at this time? All right, seeing none, I will open the public hearing and ask the applicant to unmute yourself, star six, and introduce yourself and add anything further that you wish to add.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. This is Gretchen Camp. I'm an architect with ESG. I think it would be helpful if Peter went through the staff report for the next building, just because they are so linked, and our comments and presentation tonight really talks about them in tandem. Would that be okay?
I would, well, I guess I would defer to Peter. We need to take these individually as projects in terms of our voting. Commissioners all have the packets and have reviewed those packets as well. So I think if you wanted to provide the context of both buildings, that would be fine with, with all of us on the commission.
Yeah, we understand that you'll vote separately, but it would be helpful for you to hear the staff report, and then when we go through our comments, we'll kind of talk about them together.
Peter, what's your feeling on this?
Maybe Kimberly can weigh in to, you know, I think we have to take items individually. I don't know if there are members of the public that are in the queue to speak to a particular project, but if the applicant, if the applicant wants to address some of the broader issues for both projects, you know, my presentation for the, the next project is going to be probably more brief because it is a lot of the same issues, but.
You know, we had a similar situation last week and I think, or two weeks ago, I think Peter was staff, maybe was staff for that as well. And there were a couple of related projects on a larger campus plan, and Peter presented the first, and then the applicant kind of wove in and out of, of both projects. And, you know, that's fine, given the fact that the.
Okay.
Commissioner. So I would, I would say Gretchen, go, go ahead and, and present kind of how you would like to present here and, and for the sake of the integrity of the kind of voting process, we'll keep them fairly distinct.
Sam? Sam, if I could weigh in, Casey's weighing in on the chat here and says that there's no restriction in us doing a joint presentation and consideration as long as we vote on the items separately. So I'll leave it up to you if you think they are very similar projects with similar applications and similar issues. So I could go through the second project briefly and explain staff's position on those applications, and then let the applicant speak to both at the same time, and then you can take the actions individually if you'd prefer that.
All right, why don't, why don't we do that?
Thank you.
Yeah. Why don't we do that? That'll be efficient with our time.
Okay, if we could call up the second presentation for item 13, then please. Okay, so I'll try to be a little more brief with this one. This is directly adjacent to the project that we just went through immediately to the east across the public alley. The project is located at 510 West Lake Street and then two parcels, 2948 and 2946 on Harriet Avenue South. Next slide. The site is currently occupied by a one-story commercial building. The applicant is proposing to demolish that in order to construct a new seven-story mixed-use building with 132 dwelling units and approximately 1,700 square feet of commercial space. Next slide. So this is the building in the middle of the three that you see here. This is an all-market rate building. Next slide. So again, it has the shared underground garage that will incorporate some of the structured parking. This application is proposing to provide 55 structured vehicle parking spaces, both in that underground garage and in a enclosed parking garage at grade. Next slide. And at the ground level here, you can see that enclosed parking area. This would be, sorry, one second. The parking would be accessed off of the alley and off of the Harriet Avenue elevation. At the ground level, the applicant again similarly is proposing two small retail spaces and some residential amenity space. In this proposal, they are also incorporating three walk-up residential units along the Harriet Avenue elevation. And then the remainder of the upgrade space is occupied by amenity and circulation space and bicycle parking. The underground garage would be accessed from this property via a ramp off of the public alley there. Next slide. Similar design in terms of exterior material expression. Brick at the base and then a combination of fiber cement and architectural metal panel. Again, this application has a couple of elevations that are requesting alternative compliance for the amount of fiber cement. Next slide. You can see with both of these projects that they would have some shadowing impacts on properties immediately to the north and to the public realm around them as the sun angle would create shadowing on those adjacent properties. Next slide. Similarly to the previous project, the applicant is proposing some enhanced landscaping along the east property line in the public right-of-way. Next slide. And then required applications here. And I'm sorry, I failed to include one application on this list. But the applicant would be requesting a rezoning from C2 to C3A, conditional use permit to increase the maximum building height. And that's to go from four stories, 56 feet, to seven stories, 78 feet. Variance to increase the maximum floor area ratio from 3.375 to 5.2. This project qualifies for the density bonus for enclosed parking, but does not get the bonus for affordable housing as it's an all-market rate project. And then it also does not qualify for that bonus for mixed uses on the ground floor. There is an additional variance that I didn't include on this list, but that's in your staff report for the minimum vehicle parking requirement to go from 66 spaces to 55 spaces. And then site plan review for the seven-story, 132-unit mixed-use building. And then we looked at this slide already showing some similar five-to-seven-story buildings with approved FAR variances from recent projects. So again, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning, the conditional use permit and the variance to minimum vehicle parking requirements for this project. We're recommending denial of the variance to the maximum FAR and to the site plan review for the same reasons that I stated in our discussion of the adjacent project.
Very good. Commissioners, are there questions on, for staff on this, recognizing that we have not opened a public hearing and have not heard from the applicant yet? And Peter, I don't see the variance related to parking in our packet or on the agenda. So if that is in fact a variance, I want to call out the fact that.
Okay, it looks like, hold on one second.
We've got rezoning, CUP for height, FAR and site plan. And I double-checked against both the agenda and within the staff report. And I, that's coming up.
Okay, yeah, it's in the staff report. It's just missing from the proposed actions. It was noticed as a part of the
All right.
Application, so we'll just have to add that to the actions.
Okay, very good. We'll add that to the actions there. Okay, all right, with that, we will open the public hearing and ask the applicant to introduce yourself once again and provide any further context you wish to provide.
Hello again, this is Gretchen. Are you ready? Can you hear me?
We can hear you Gretchen. It's all you.
Great. Again, I'm an architect with ESG and I'm going to walk through a number of design revisions we've made to the projects since we reviewed them at committee the whole and that was last year and I believe it was actually in August. So it's been a little while. And then Carol will talk from Fagri about the 2040 Plan goals that are supported by the project. And she'll also talk about the FAR a little bit in more detail. And then finally, Steve Min with Loopy will present the details about the affordable housing for the project.
I'm going to jump in very briefly here, urging your staff. I want to clarify, we are opening the public hearing for both item and item 12, or sorry, for item 12 and item 13. So we'll proceed with comments for the two projects individually listed in the agenda together. So sorry for the interruption.
No problem. I did submit some slides. Are you able to open those up? There's 15 of them and if you can start with slide number one that shows the project in context, let me know when you're seeing that slide.
Yeah, we see that slide and I believe there's a 27-second delay or some random number of seconds for you, so.
So in this first slide, the view is looking northwest within, and it's showing uptown in the distance. So the phase one building, like Peter mentioned, is at 410 West Lake Street. And that's under construction and that will deliver 111 affordable housing units this October. In phase two, located at 500 West Lake Street, that includes 132 market rate units and 55 parking spaces. And then lastly, phase three at 550 West Lake, that has 95 affordable units and 55 parking spaces. So in this image, you can see a number of multifamily housing projects that have been constructed west of Lindale over the last decade. And more recently, there have been multifamily projects constructed just north of our project site. So if you go to slide number two, you can see those projects more closely. So the Lindy Apartments are along the Midtown Greenway between Grand and Harriet, and that's a six-story building. You can see that just north of our project site. Across the street from the Lindy to the east is another new building, Rana Village, with five stories of residential units. And then if you look to the left of our project site, the left, to the west of phase three, that's the Garfield parking lot. And that the city has issued for RFP this spring. And I believe those proposals were already due, maybe they're delayed, but those were due in April. And that's assumed that developers have proposed high-density mixed-use projects there at probably six and seven stories. If you go to slide number three, I'll just walk through a number of exterior design revisions that we've made. So at the COW meeting, we initially presented a phase two building, if you, if many of you remember, that was essentially a mirror of phase one exterior. It had similar materials and a same color scheme. Many commissioners encouraged us to redesign the exterior of phase two so that they weren't twin buildings. And we've done that. So with those comments in mind, we changed the color palette to be lighter on phase two and we also modified the roof line to be different. It's a seven-story building, which provides a visual stepping of materials along Lake Street. And then you can see that in slide number four. So as the projects go from east to west, this kind of a stepping of materials and changing of color palette. If you go to slide number five, previously, we had a step back on the top floor of phase two that was on the north side of the building. And we had a lot of conversations with planning staff and other stakeholders about the massing of specifically of the phase two building. And we shifted the seventh floor step-back to the Lake Street frontage or the south side. And we did that because Lake Street is the vantage point from which most people will experience these buildings, either as a pedestrian, riding a bike, driving a car, or riding in transit on Lake Street. If you go to slide number six, you can see that we've also moved the outdoor amenity terrace to the southeast corner of the building on seventh floor. And that will provide more massing relief at the Harriet intersection. On slide number seven, you'll see that as you move north along the Harriet elevation, then you have a building recess of more than 55 feet for a courtyard and that courtyard is 32 feet wide. And on slide number eight, this is an image when you're standing at the street at Lake and Harriet. And from that sidewalk, the building is perceived as a six-story building. Next slide, please. At the COW meeting, we talked actually quite a bit about the ground floor uses. And we talked about commercial versus publicly accessible, what was the definition, things like that. So we revised the ground floor plan in both buildings to include additional active uses. On slide number nine, that's phase two building. All of the spaces highlighted in blue are publicly accessible. So there are two retail spaces with just over 1,700 square feet. And then the club room, business center and conference room are all available for public use. So to help facilitate the easy use of those spaces, we've added exterior doors as well as access from the vestibule. Very similar on slide number 10, you'll see that in phase three, there are two retail tenant spaces, about 1,400, a little over 1,400 square feet. And just like phase two building, there will be a club room, business center and conference room available to the public. Lastly, on slide number 11, I just wanted to touch upon sustainable design. In your packets, the project narratives for both projects include kind of a more detailed summary of the sustainable design strategies for each building. I just wanted to highlight some of the more notable features. Each building will incorporate green roof elements that help to capture stormwater. Composting will be available for residents. And this was something that was very important to the Whittier residents when we met with them. So we've included composting within the projects. And I'll just note that there's a letter of support from Whittier in your packets for the projects. We'll have an hour car vehicle available and I'm saying within the campus because it's really the three buildings. And we'll have one car that can be used by any residents and then it's open to the public as well. And finally, all of the projects are going to be enrolled in the Excel Energy Design Assistance Program where we can fully vet a number of strategies to optimize energy savings for the buildings. And those strategies range from roofing and wall assemblies to lighting and mechanical controls. Phase one has already completed the EDA program and we just had the introductory meeting for phase two last week. With that, I'm available for questions on design or anything I've covered. Otherwise, Carol Lansing will continue with the presentation.
Commissioners, are there questions for the applicant? At this time, knowing we've got one more presentation here. I'll ask one, just looking at the sustainable design piece here. So the solar rooftop, you are not committing to the solar rooftop. You're conditionally committing to the solar rooftop, subject to state tax credits. Is that correct?
Yes, it's very intentional that they, they're intending to install them. We just have to go through the process of getting through the financing on it. I think Steve can touch on that a little later, but that is the goal, is to have the solar on all three buildings.
All right.
Again, subject to financing.
All right, Commissioner Schrader.
Thank you. Just, I think one of the things that keeps coming up around these buildings is just how bulky they are, like how big the difference is in every hour from what's there. Could you help kind of give an idea of what it would mean to have a less bulky building? What would be sacrificed? You know, what would be gained?
I actually think that will be covered by Steve Min when we go through, especially in terms of what will be sacrificed. So maybe we'll have Carol go on and then Steve might answer that question for you.
Right.
Commissioner Schrader, were you asking less bulky building in terms of a lower FAR or less bulky building in terms of redistribution of the FAR? Because I want, I want Mr. Min to be well-prepared to answer this.
That, that's the great question. I think on the FAR. Thank you.
All right. With that, seeing no other questions from commissioners, I will pass it over to Ms. Lansing.
Great, and you can go to slide number 12 for Carol Lansing.
Hello, commissioners. As we all asked first, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Carol.
All right. This is Carol Lansing. I'm an attorney at Fagri. I have trouble keeping track. Fagri Drinker Biddle and Reed. And working for the applicant. I'm going to speak about how we view the 2040 Plan Land Use and Built Form Guidance applying to the projects. But first, the community mixed-use future land use designation calls for large-scale mixed-use development. And active non-residential uses are required at the street level. But the 2040 Plan does not require that they constitute 50% or more of the ground floor area. The 2040 Plan does not include any direction or guidance on the percentage of area at all. So both projects include retail spaces along the street and both projects therefore comply with 2040 Plan guidance for inclusion of those active non-residential uses on the ground floor. And Gretchen also talked to you then about how other publicly accessible and active spaces also comply with guidance in Site Plan Review Chapter for active use as well. And we think the intent of this land use guidance. So then second, issue the height of the proposed FAR of the project, we believe comply with the corridor six built form guidance. Requests to, as you know, requests to exceed six stories will be evaluated on the basis of whether or not a taller building is a reasonable means for further achieving comp plan goals. And staff concurs that the project does that. It does further comp plan goals and therefore they are recommending approving a seven-story height building. The 2040 Plan though does not include guidance regarding FAR limits. However, I think it's reasonable to conclude that the plan implicitly supports higher FAR for buildings that justify increased height. And the purpose of allowing increased height over corridor six guidance or other built form guidance isn't just height for height's sake, it's to allow more floor area. It's to allow more density in terms of both FAR and for projects like this, number of housing units or size of housing units. So it's my understanding that built form overlays that are in development will establish FAR limits and bonuses to go with corridor six and other land use and built form guidance. It seems, I believe, staff is applying their internal discussions about what those FAR limits may be proposed to be to these projects, but there's been no public discussion or vetting of any proposed FAR limits yet or any discussion about the different, publicly about the different types. about the different types of bonuses that might be available. And so it's, you know, it's my view that FAR that can be considered appropriate for projects in this example, the Corridor Six area, that are also going to have greater height, should have FAR or be reasonable for them to have FAR that's greater than the prior projects that had been built along Lake Street. So we've now got guidance for six or more, depending on comp plan, goals and how they're being promoted. I think that needs to apply to the idea of FAR too, and perhaps to a greater extent than staff is currently discussing, but again, we all need a chance to weigh in on that. So we have the slide that Gretchen asked to be put up, Proposed Findings to Support the FAR Variance. I think it's important to note that staff has, you know, in this case, staff said, "We don't see how the FAR variance can meet the legal findings," for practical difficulties. But it's important to note that staff has routinely recognized as a practical difficulty supporting an FAR variance that the existing zoning limits prevent compliance with city land use policies that encourage greater density than the current zoning district. In fact, just earlier tonight, that was the reasoning staff provided to approve an FAR variance for the 212th Avenue project, and that also only qualified for one FAR bonus. So as you see on the slide, we believe, you know, we're showing our proposed findings, and with the focus on this discussion being on 2040 Plan Goals, we've highlighted that this increased FAR allows significant production of affordable and accessible housing on a transit corridor. It promotes a complete neighborhood by adding walkable retail uses in place of existing auto-oriented uses. I wouldn't poo-poo these, you know, a number of additional retail spaces where currently we're talking auto, and that it promotes construction of sustainable buildings, as Gretchen has described, to improve the city's climate change resilience. So those are my comments, and I will pass the torch to Steve Minn unless commissioners have questions for me.
Commissioners, are there any questions for Carol?
Seeing none, thank you, Carol. And Mr. Minn, come on forward. Star six on your desk.
Mr. President, thank you. Hopefully, the audio is working here. I've tested it, so hopefully you should hear me.
We hear you. Thank you.
Great. So I appreciate your time this evening, and appreciate your flexibility in letting us present globally the two projects. You're all aware we're in a different regulatory scheme than we were even 12 months ago, and inclusionary zoning is one of the most important regulatory schemes that have changed the landscape of development. At Loopie Development, we're trying to embrace that and demonstrate to you how density in a transit-oriented corridor can be one of the more useful tools in solving the affordable housing crisis, and we're trying to demonstrate to you how we believe it can be applicable. And I have a couple of slides that we prepared. I'm hopeful that your technology team can put those up. I have five panels, hopefully they can be put on the screen. The first one numbered one in the lower right-hand corner. I point out, the research is from Finance and Commerce, they have an apartment tracker, but a little over 5,800 units of high-end market-rate housing have been built in Uptown since 2009. And unfortunately, only 418 of those units were permanently affordable, the Buzza Building and the Miroles Building. And part of the reason for that, I might point out, is that since 2009, costs have essentially doubled. It used to be about $125,000 to build a unit, now we're well into $250,000 a year. That's a 200% increase in the apartment construction costs. Our vision here, by linking the two buildings together, is to increase the affordable housing inventory in total between our three buildings by 62% from what has been built to date since 2009. If you could turn to the next panel, number two. We've devised a scheme with Phase Two and Phase Three where Phase Two provides some economic subsidy to Phase Three. It was more efficient for us to do a market-rate building and an affordable building separately rather than a blended approach. Because we have some expertise in the affordable housing business, and we know how to do that, it was, I'll demonstrate to you where these efficiencies are. First and foremost, with a little bit of a land transfer, we've saved about $400,000. The way we've designed the garage structures where we enter from Phase Two and do not have to provide an entrance in Phase Three, we save about 3/4 of a million dollars in infrastructure cost. And then the alley construction, the burden is on the Phase Two to build the supporting walls for the under-built and the subterranean alley structure. That's $650,000 of wall structure that Phase Three does not have to bear. So that's a little over $1.8 million of direct subsidy to the affordable building. And then there's the economies of scale that we achieve by doing two separate buildings. There's roughly 12 additional parking spaces over the 10-year value of Phase Three, that's worth about $300,000 of income to the building. And the management efficiencies, about 20% less staffing is needed, so we save about $230,000 there. So a little over $2.3 million of direct subsidy, as we have calculated it, is a transfer from Phase Two to Phase Three. If you'll turn to the third panel on my presentation sheet, I'd like to briefly discuss what we think is the real nub of FAR here. The question is, can FAR be used to fill the allowable height? I think Ms. Lansing has pointed that out, that if you're going to allow seven stories and 84 feet in Corridor Six, you know, we're under the 84-foot limit here. We don't think our increases are as draconian as Mr. Crandall has suggested. In fact, Mr. Crandall had suggested in a memorandum that staff could support 4.35 as an FAR. That was as early as March of this year. So we took him at his word, and we calculate 5.2 over what staff thought was reasonable at 4.35, and we calculate that as a 19% increase in FAR for 500 West Lake, and only 12.8% increase for the 550 West Lake. We think that's a reasonable ask when you're increasing the amount of affordable housing that would otherwise be available to the project if we were to do these just on a market-rate basis, and I'll show you what that looks like on the next panel, page four. If we were just looking at inclusionary zoning to deliver the affordable units, 500 West would only be required to deliver nine affordable units, and 550 would only be required to deliver six affordable units. That would be a total of 15 units. They would be at 20% of the adjusted median income of the metropolitan area and only affordable for 20 years. What we're providing in this scheme is 95 affordable units, some as low as a 30% AMI, some at 50%, and some at 80%. And more than 65% of our units are at 50% AMI or lower, and we would maintain that affordability for at least 30 years. And that's a 633% increase in affordable units from what the IZ would require. So we think you're getting a lot of bang for the buck here. And, Mr. President, I think Councilmember Schrader asked what would be the impact if we weren't able to achieve these FARs. Well, there's just no simple solution. We'd have to take a floor off of each building. So that would be 22 units less on 500, and roughly 15 units left, or 16 units less on 550. And under those scenarios, the economics are such that we would not be able to do the affordability mix. I would just deliver the IZ requirement, and the IZ requirement on the adjusted basis would be actually 13 units, not 15. So we have either 95 units of affordability by letting density guide the subsidy, or we would have 13 affordable units under the IZ policy. And as you were speaking earlier in the approval for 212th Avenue, I note that the Ruder Walton people are proposing affordable units in that count, and that's because they have quite a bit of density. And that's going to be the solution that most developers are going to approach the city on. Okay, we'll do affordable housing as part of IZ, but we're going to have to have some mechanism to reduce the cost of the land and the cost of the building spread. I've been around long enough to remember when the housing bonus, affordable housing bonus was first passed at 20%, and not many people took advantage of it because it was a break-even proposition at best. Let me turn you to the last page that I have in our presentation, number five. I think we've covered, Gretchen's covered, that we have green roofs for both buildings. We have plenty of bicycle parking for both buildings. We're in a transit zone, we purposely have zoned this project, designed this project to take advantage of the future BRT that's going to be built near the 35W Lake Street interchange. Commissioner Rockwell, you asked specifically about PV solar. I've done PV solar on every one of our buildings since 2015. It's always important to catch which tax credit program we're using, but we'll do it. My commitment to you is this: We want it, we're doing it on Phase One, we're doing it on Phase Two, and we just haven't even applied for it on Phase Three yet, but it's our commitment to do it. We believe it's important. And the totality of our project here would be 206 affordable units between Phases One, Two, and Three. It's hard to get a better bang for your buck than to give a little bit of density to get that kind of impact on our affordable housing crisis. I'm happy to stand for questions, and thank you for your time.
Commissioners, are there questions of the applicant at this time? All right. Seeing none at this time, is there anybody else on the line wishing to testify? And recalling that this is both the public hearing for item number 12 and item number 13 on the Planning Commission agenda.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
All right. It sounds like there are two folks in the queue. Christine, if there's someone, start with you, please.
Hello, my name is Christine Martenson, and I reside at 2930 Harriet. I'm requesting that you deny the rezoning for both of these projects from C2 to C3A because the increased height allowed for the buildings will extremely affect my property. My residence was built in 1886, and the architects at that time designed the houses to take advantage of solar energy. On the south side of my house, there are 11 large windows. In fall, winter, and spring, these windows create a great amount of heat in my house because of access to sunlight. The shadowing that the proposed buildings will create will block the solar gain I rely on to heat my house. I consider the windows in my house to be a solar energy system. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Stephanie Brown. Please unmute yourself, star six, and identify your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, this is Stephanie Brown. I live at 302 East 26th Street in Whittier, and I am speaking today as the Chair of the Housing Issues Committee for the Whittier Alliance and a Whittier Alliance Board Member. We wrote letters in support of both projects, two separate letters, I think you may have identical letters in your packets. Ultimately, for Whittier, the question of affordability has reigned supreme for us. As I look at the staff concerns, there are staff concerns that echoed early feedback that was given by community members on the project regarding the bulk, regarding a desire to have additional commercial space. Ultimately, we did door-knocking around the neighborhood, we did a community survey, we had 53 responses, and we had two community meetings that each had between 25 and 30 voting numbers. For the item number two, the affordable project, the decision for us was very clear and unanimous that the affordability of the project justified the variances around the density, and that that made a lot of sense. I think the item number 13 was slightly more complex for the neighborhood, and ultimately had a tighter vote. The question is whether both buildings and both variances are needed to support the affordability in the community. Again, I'm building clear. On the second, ultimately, our neighborhood committee decided to err in favor of whatever it took to get affordability, and ultimately have written a letter in support of that project, assuming that the affordability at the full number of units that are currently proposed is also approved and built. I understand all the questions at play. I think we see this as a neighborhood that is facing a lot of transition, and that the comp single's around affordability and mixed income were very much written for neighborhoods like this that are facing a lot of development pressures and have a large number of residents below the median income who need affordable options. Thank you very much.
I have a comment.
We are, only allowed folks to comment one time in the hearing, please. Is there anybody else who has not testified yet who wishes to testify?
Yes.
There is, there is. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Allison Sharkey. I live at 3612 15th Avenue South. I'm the Executive Director of the Lake Street Council. I urge the Planning Commission to support this proposal. Affordability is incredibly important to our community at this time, and I believe that this project is in the spirit of the new comprehensive plan, and that to achieve affordability, we are going to need to compromise in other areas to make that happen. And so I would urge support for this proposal. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else on the line? Apologies for my confusion and inability to see who's on the list. If there's anybody else wishing to testify from the public, please unmute yourself, star six, and state your name. All right. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. And commissioners, we will first open up our discussion. Well, I suppose our discussion can go on both projects, but then we will focus on project number 12 and confirm our votes and motions on project number 12 first, and then item number 13. Commissioner Meyer, I know that you had a question.
Yeah. I just wanted to ask, like, are we allowed to consider the impacts of one project on another? Because the affordability argument is very compelling to me, but I don't know if it's something that we're allowed to consider as a legal finding. We'd just like clarification from staff on that. Like, can we use the effect on affordability of one project to justify the second project?
This is, I guess I would just clarify, is that, what application would that be in relation to?
I guess it would be in relation to item number 12 on number 13.
But would it be for the FAR variance application that you would want to consider a practical difficulty on one property based on circumstances being created on another?
Yes.
Okay. No, we would be advising you to consider the practical difficulties on each specific property.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Marwa.
Hi, I just had a quick question about the affordability levels in the three buildings, or the two buildings. Could the applicant speak to that, about what target affordability levels they're going for?
Ask the applicant to speak to that. Star six unmutes.
This is Steve Minn responding to the question. Commissioner, if I understand, you're asking what the level of affordability is for each building?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So for the existing first building, which is under construction, we have 10 units at 30% adjusted median income, which is rather low. We have a total of 40% of the units, ones, twos, and studios, at 50% AMI or below, and then the balance is at 60% AMI. And all of those units are guaranteed affordable for no less than 30 years. And that's roughly the same schema that we would apply to the 550 West Lake Street building. There is a plan for a dedicated number of units at 30%, an overall goal of at least 40% at 50% AMI or lower. 40% at 50% AMI or lower, but we actually have increased it to almost half. And then there's a little bit of a change in the federal law that allows us to have a little bit more at higher rents, and that allows us to have more of the lower rents. It's called income averaging. So that's what creates the affordability component, and all of our units are at 30% commitments for that affordability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sweets.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to comment on the issue of the variance and the question about that, perhaps directly to Commissioner Myers' question on it. But, you know, we run into this time and time again, or we have so far this year, in this situation where the zoning code and the zoning ordinances don't yet match up with the comp plan and the goals of the comp plan. And although there might be good reasons for a project, like the affordability we're talking about, things that are desirable and things that are consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan, that's not the analysis that we need to take a look at in deciding whether to grant variance or not. And Mr. Crandall's speaking specifically to Item Number 12, his comments in the staff report are very clear on whether to be our practical difficulties unique to a property. So what is it about this particular property that means that we can't comply with it? And there isn't anything about the particular parcel of land or something that means that you have to go higher, that you have to go to seven stories instead of six, or anything like that. And I find also compelling the reasoning in the staff memo that there isn't anything here that mitigates the bulkiness mass of the building with the increased FAR through design. I know, I heard what the applicant had to say, and I understand how the project has changed and all of that, but in terms of really meaningful architectural changes or setbacks or something like that, we're not seeing it. So, you know, we can talk about whether things comply with the spirit of something or are consistent with other goals, but for a variance, in order to grant that, we do need to have those practical difficulties that are unique to the property. And I'm not hearing or seeing anything that shows that that's present here.
Thank you, Commissioner Sweets. And, you know, I'll recognize, we did hear FAR is connected to the height that is in the comprehensive plan, and I would point also to our policy number 5 in 2040 Plan of Design as well. And I know it's a confusing time in which we want to try to balance what is in the plan and what we're trying to do. Commissioners, is there any other comments or discussion? And if there are not, I will also entertain a motion on Item Number 12.
If I could just point out one more thing that I failed to mention in my presentation is that both projects, because of that shared underground garage, require a vacation of the subterranean alleyway between the two projects, and that application is included as a part of the 550 affordable project, item Number 12.
Very good. Thank you. And Commissioner Smiley, I see a question for staff.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have a quick question. It is more procedural at this point, and I apologize. Part of it comes from my being new on the commission. I just want to know if you can clarify with denying the site plan and/or denying the variance and whatnot, what the next step is for the applicant, and if this project will basically be coming back to the Planning Commission?
Sure. The project, Commissioner Smiley, the project could not move forward without an approved site plan, so the applicant could come back to the commission with revisions to the project that would make changes to the site plan and to the proposed FAR in order to try to gain the approval of staff and/or the commission. So they would need to come back through for approval.
And I would add, Commissioner Smiley, you know, there is also an appeal process. So there is both a kind of revision process to come back with an altered project to the Planning Commission, and there is an appeal process that would take an appeal up to the City Council and potentially ultimately the courts. So we're kind of at first, the first stage of judicial, or quasi-judicial review here. Any further question or motion? Commissioner Olson.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve Items A, B, and E with the stated conditions.
So it's a motion to approve A, B, and E on Item Number 12. To be clear, on Item Number 12 with the staff conditions. Commissioner Meyer?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Caprini.
Aye.
Dunick.
Aye.
Smiley.
Aye.
Luki Pier.
Aye.
Marwa.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Sweets.
Aye.
9-0.
Very good. That motion carries. Commissioner Olson.
I will make a motion to approve Items C and D of 12.
All right. We have a motion to approve against staff recommendation, Item C and D.
Second.
All right. That was awesome. Commissioner Olson, back to you.
Yeah, I'll just sort of speak, I'll try to speak to my findings, and I would appreciate any help from any supporters that may be out there. You know, I think this is a very busy commercial area. It's a high-frequency transit route area. It's right by the Greenway. It's near an activity center. And so this is the exact type of place where I think we should be building denser housing if we want to be supporting the goals of the comprehensive plan. Some of those goals are affordable and accessible housing, climate change resilience, and complete neighborhoods. Yep. And so I think in this case, the zoning code itself is making it difficult to meet the goals of the comp plan. You know, I don't think that this alters the character of the neighborhood. We saw from staff, all of the buildings nearby that are similarly sized, and I think this is a reasonable use of the property and truly in the spirit of meeting those comprehensive plan goals.
And this is Kimberly Wang. Whoops, I'll turn on my camera. Just, it sounded like those were findings that Commissioner Olson made as part of that discussion, but just to clarify, we will need findings if the commission is to vote in opposition to the staff recommendation that was prepared. And I believe if the commission does go that route, Mr. Crandall has some prepared conditions of approval for the commission to consider as part of any approval.
All right. Yes, we will ultimately need to kind of consolidate these comments into findings. Commissioner Marwa.
Yes, I have a question, I think for Peter or for the applicant, but it's if this, if this was to, you know, be six stories instead or be less dense as it may be, the kind of imposing feeling that it kind of looks like, what is the trade-off? I guess what is, what will the building have to lose to be able to do that?
I think that the applicant addressed that a little bit. Sorry, go ahead, Steve.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Peter. Mr. President, Commissioner Marwa, I might have alluded to it earlier, but I'll repeat it. The only way to reduce the FAR effectively is to take a floor off of each of the two buildings, 22 units lost at 500 and roughly 16 units lost at 550. And that effect would be, I would only perform the minimum inclusionary zoning requirement, which is 13 affordable units instead of 95.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Luki Pier.
Yeah, I just had a quick question for Commissioner Olson. If she could maybe elaborate a little bit more. I'm having trouble with the first required finding regarding practical difficulties.
Yeah, I think that the location of the property being accessible to, you know, the Greenway, high-frequency transit, and all these amenities that can create a complete neighborhood, you know, create a condition where this is the place where we should be making or building this type of housing.
And quick follow-up question for staff then. So Peter, can you just refresh my memory, though? We just, with the 2040 Plan, did we then envision, given all these amenities, this having a higher FAR being allowed or not? Because it seems as though that, you know, we kind of just went through this.
I talked about this a little bit during my presentation, but as the commission is aware, we don't have, and as Ms. Lansing pointed out, we don't have an updated code to reflect the new adopted land use policy. So, you know, the code that we are currently working from is based off of the C3A zoning, which has a four-story height limit. So, you know, staff could make findings for a reasonable FAR variance that we would expect to see for a six-story building that might be proposed on this site, and that's why I cited some of those previous examples of six- and seven-story buildings that have recently been approved in the area and along the commercial corridor that were deemed to be reasonable based on the land use policy, that were all, you know, significantly lower than what's being proposed. So I think in that case, you could make the finding that the code is not, that the code provides a practical difficulty for meeting the land use guidance, but we don't think that in this case, the FAR is a reasonable request for that. And just because we don't have new zoning, that doesn't mean that, you know, sky's the limit in terms of an FAR request.
Commissioner Smiley.
Thank you, President Rockwell. And actually, this is a follow-up to the previous question. I exactly had that same question, and I just want, the clarification from staff is that, so we're in that weird space that the comp plan has been adopted, but the zoning code hasn't been updated yet to be consistent with the comp plan for the implementation of its goals and policies. So based on what I'm hearing from what you answered, Commissioner Luki Pier's question, is that you think there is potentially room for increasing the FAR in this zone, but probably not to this number that being presented, but there will be a consideration for that?
Exactly, yeah. The best information that we have to go on now is basically precedent for what's been approved before in terms of reasonable six- and seven-story projects and their FARs, and this project exceeds what we think is reasonable and approvable from a legal perspective and the variance.
And Kimberly, if there's further comments?
Yes, just to clarify, as Commissioner Smiley noted, we are currently in a situation where the comp plan has been adopted, but the zoning code has not been updated yet to come into conformance or to eliminate inconsistencies between the comp plan and the zoning code. Per state law, we have nine months to get that work done. It's underway. We aren't to a point right now where we're ready to publish any proposed FAR numbers for our built form districts, but, you know, the team that's working on it and the current line of thinking is that it would not be 4.9 or 5.2 as are proposed for these two projects in the corridor 6, Built Form District.
Commissioners, are there any further questions or comments before we look to articulate these findings? All right. So from what I heard, and Commissioner Olson or Meyer, motion maker and second on this, clarify if this is not particularly your intent here, but that we are not seeing an alteration of the character of the area. It's a busy area, high-frequency transit area, it's right by an activity center, and there's a fair amount of height and density in this area already, so we're not altering the essential character or harming health and welfare. The use of the property is reasonable in the spirit of a comprehensive plan because, again, because it is in an activity center, there's high-frequency transit. This helps build out a complete neighborhood, pedestrian-oriented, complete neighborhood. And there was also a note of the climate change resilience boosted by this project and the green commitments of the project, and perhaps also the density of the project, transit-oriented location, which is a part of the comprehensive plan in addition to density and height guidance. And then on the practical difficulties, we heard that the practical difficulty on this was because of the conflict of the zoning code and the comprehensive plan and location-specific, it is that the comprehensive plan is designed in particular for locations like this high-density intersection, like this kind of main street of the city, creating a unique difficulty for this site, or at least this area that is not shared by all projects. Is that a fair summary of your points here, reviewing the notes? Commissioner Olson says yes in the chat for public record. All right. With that, and seeing no other comments from Commissioners, and, sorry, and to clarify, the findings of the variance, Item C, were the basis of the findings for denial of site plan review. So with, unless I am mistaken, with the findings here, the site plan review could be approved. Commissioner Smiley?
I just actually just wanted to point out what Kimberly mentioned as well, and wondering if with that motion, the recommendations from staff for conditions of approval for C and D, if we decide to approve those two, is going to be applied, or would that be a separate motion?
That would not be a separate motion. Can entertain- That would not be a separate motion, can entertain the addition of those conditions. I am not looking at those conditions and don't know where they are. Later, in Dropbox. The IT team just received the conditions. Does this mean we will get them up on the screen? It seems like yes.
Mr. Chair, give us just a moment, we'll have those loaded for you.
Very good. I can stop my meandering monologue here.
So I can explain a little bit, maybe, with regard to the variance to increase the maximum floor area ratio, we're suggesting a condition that the applicant meet the standard for the mixed-use density bonus by providing at least 50% of the gross floor area as commercial space on the ground, on the ground floor. And then for site plan review, several of the proposed conditions are kind of boilerplate conditions that we apply to most projects regarding approval. Specifically, the approval timeline for how long an application is valid, the requirement that staff needs to review and approve the final plans. And then we're suggesting that the project comply with the minimum standards for exterior building materials on all elevations. So that really just affects, I think, the north elevation and the south elevation on this particular project. And then we're suggesting that the applicant provide for pedestrian-scale lighting along the Westlake Street elevation and Garfield elevations, that they screen any mechanical equipment to meet the standards of the zoning code, that any proposed signage conform to the Chapter 543 of the code in relationship to approvable signs for the C3A district, that the applicant submit a tax parcel combination form, which is required of any project that combines several existing parcels, and that the project comply with requirements for inclusionary zoning.
Mr. President, this is the applicant. May I speak to one of these comments?
Sorry, the public hearing is closed. So unless there's a question by Commissioner, the public hearing needs to remain closed. We, okay, so let me first ask, I see that there are other people who need to ask, and, sorry, who's time to talk? Yes.
I'm sorry, this is Carol Lansing. Just, we, we were not given the opportunity to address the proposed conditions of approval. And we don't want to drag it out, but there is one that Mr. Min would like to address.
I will see if a commissioner wishes to ask for that, but the public hearing is closed, so we can ask for that. But first, I want to see if these conditions are even part of the motion. Commissioner Olson, or would any commissioner consider a friendly amendment to, or consider an amendment, we'll see if Commissioner Olson considers it friendly, to add these conditions, proposed conditions of approval to the motion?
Yes, I will gladly accept these friendly amendments.
All right. I'll take that as you making, making the amendment to your motion. Let's see if there's a second for that. All right, Commissioner Marwa? I think you have to audibly say a second.
I second these recommendations.
All right. We have, we have a motion and a second to add these to the, to the motion. All right. Commissioner Lupke-Pier?
Yeah, I just had a quick question for staff in regard to the inclusionary zoning requirement. Do you know if this would have an impact on the mix of unit size and types that are currently being proposed? And if so, what the impact would be?
I don't know if it would have an impact on that. The applicant will be required to work with our housing staff should the project get approved in order to meet the standards of that requirement. And I believe that the linkage of the two projects, the market rate and the proposed affordable projects, are intended to meet the requirements of that policy.
So it's, it's your understanding that there would be a mix, so it would be affordability both in efficiencies, but also units that would house a family?
Commissioner Lupke-Pier, this is Kimberly. The inclusionary zoning ordinance does have requirements for the mix of units and the types of finishes provided within a building. Those requirements are based on the overall mix of units within each building. You know, so for example, if it was a building of entirely efficiency units, they would not be required to provide an affordable unit that had three bedrooms, but the, the mix would need to comply with the inclusionary zoning requirements, which does address those issues.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions? I'll ask the applicant to briefly respond to the impact of the, of the conditions.
Mr. President, thank you. This is Stephen Min speaking. So there are two parts to the answer. The first part of the answer is, as long as we're approved with both the market rate building at seven stories, 132 units, and the affordable building at seven stories, 95 units, the diversity of unit mix is accounted for in the 550 building. If we're forced to reduce the floor heights and go to the IZ minimums of 13 units, the IZ ordinance provides a different mix, because each building will then be primarily market rate and we have to distribute units differently. But as proposed, and if the motion is adopted, all the units in the 550 building would be affordable, and we have diversity throughout the building in both unit mix and affordability mix. That's required by federal law. The second answer to the question is, if the variance to increase the minimum floor area as proposed by staff is included in your approval, then our unit mix would dramatically change, because we cannot accommodate an additional common area use on the first floor. We'd have to move the amenities to the second floor and lose units in both buildings. We've tried to point that out to the staff, that the footprint of the parcel in the building are relatively small, the residential and parking uses on the main floor of both buildings take up a good portion of the ground floor area already, and pushing the amenities to an upper floor would just simply eliminate units. And I'm not sure that's the intent of the commission or the IZ. So we would encourage either the commission to acknowledge the areas in addition to retail as commercial, or reject that portion of the staff findings.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, any further discussion before call of vote? All right, seeing none, to refresh our voting on item C and D, the FAR variance and site plan review for item 12, to approve both with the findings as articulated earlier, with the one stated condition on the FAR variance and the nine stated conditions on site plan review. Clerk, please call the roll.
Caprini?
Abstained.
Dunick?
Aye.
And Smiley?
Nay.
Lupke-Pier?
No.
Marwa?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweezy?
No.
So that's one abstention, five yeses, and three nos.
All right. That motion carries, and that concludes our business with item number 12. I will now move to the voting and any further discussion if necessary for item number 13. Reminding folks that, I see, the clerk is reminding everybody what I was about to remind people of as well, that we have a parking variance up here. So Commissioner Olson, Commissioner Olson?
I'll make a motion to approve on number 13, items A, B, and E with the stated conditions.
All right. A, B, and E with the stated conditions. Do we have a second? One second. Commissioner Meyer?
Second.
Second.
Pardon the sound of the bath in the background. All right. Commissioner Sweezy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to incorporate by reference my comments on the variance requests in item 12 to this one, and they are identical. Thanks.
Let the record show. Thank you. Further recommendations or discussion here? Commissioner Olson?
I'll make a motion to approve items C and D with any stated conditions, including the ones that Kimberly has not shown us yet. I'm assuming they're the same.
All right, we have not voted on the first motion yet, so.
Sorry.
No, it's all right. So we have our first motion as items A, B, and it was articulated as items A, B, and E. And I just want to articulate for everybody that, that when we say item E, that's a motion to approve variance to reduce the minimum vehicle parking requirement from 66 to 55 And so why don't we, if there are no further comments or discussions on A, B, and the parking variance, E, that's a rezoning, COP for height and a parking variance, let's take a real call vote on that.
Caprini? Caprini?
Abstained.
Dunick?
Aye.
And Smiley?
Aye.
Lupke-Pier?
Aye.
Marwa?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweezy?
No.
That's eight, zero, with one abstention.
All right, that motion carries, and now Commissioner Olson.
I'll make a motion to approve items C and D with staff conditions.
All right, I'll ask that the staff conditions be placed.
Yeah, and I can just comment.
Hold on, Peter. Let me get this on this, and then, then let's get into the discussion. Is there a second on the motion? Commissioner Meyer?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We have the, the suggested conditions on the screen. Peter?
The proposed conditions are basically identical to the proposed conditions for the previous project with regard to both the variance for FAR and to site plan review.
Very good. All right, so we see one stated, or one recommended condition for item C and nine for item D. And Commissioner Olson, I want to clarify that you are anticipating, or you're using the same findings as were used on item number 12 for this, this item here?
Correct.
All right. So we'll use the same findings as for items C and D and items number 12 for item number 13 here. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Caprini? Caprini? Dunick?
Aye.
And Smiley?
No.
Lupke-Pier?
No.
Marwa?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweezy?
No.
That's five yeses and three nos, and no response from Caprini.
All right, that motion carries, and that concludes our business with item number 13. That also concludes our business with all of the public hearing items, which brings us to number 14 on our agenda. Any updates from that? Kimberly, I'll pass the mic to you as well.
Yes, thank you commissioners for another successful virtual meeting. We will have our first virtual committee of the whole meeting on Thursday of this week. It was on the calendar as a joint CPC, HPC committee of the whole meeting, but we didn't have any joint items. So it will just be the planning commissioners, and it should function pretty similarly to how we're doing this meeting tonight, and hopefully will go just as smooth.
All right. I can't tell if we're setting a low bar for smoothness, but I appreciate everybody's help. That's, that's a comment unmade, not of anybody else. I appreciate everybody's, everybody's assistance in making sure that these meetings flow. And as always, it is difficult to, to manage all of us commissioners, and difficult to figure out who's trying to talk when, and everybody is, is doing a great job on this. So thank you, and with that, the meeting is adjourned.